Here being the forum, I will call this meeting to order. Mr. Gant is recording the meeting. Is anyone else?
I'm going to record as well as a recording device for the sake of our executive assistant, who could not attend today, so I'm going to record as well.
I don't hear anybody else wishing to. We don't do the pledge of allegiance to these kind of meetings, so we can.
Are you using your iPhone for that recording?
No.
Or is it a tape?
Do you want me to record on my iPhone?
I just haven't done this before. She does it all the time. I suppose I should get it for granted. Sure, it's an easy tool. If you're recording that, I can always get it from you. I'm just going to take it.
First, I just want to touch base on our schedule. So for the remainder of the month of August, we have a regular session this Monday, the 20th at 7:00 PM, and that's still at the Town Library, correct?
Yes.
Then, nobody mentioned it when we were touching base, but I believe we also have a working session on Thursday, the 30th.
Yes.
Okay. At 3:00 PM, and that's here. And the agenda for that is the Town Administrator Negotiations.
3:00 PM on the 30th?
Yep.
Okay. I did not have that.
Okay, and that's August. Now, we have a couple of somewhat, if unique is where I worry about, circumstances relative to September, so I need to figure out what we're doing on that. One is that, you know, it's just like a combined religion and government, but if there's a God, we're moving to the new Town Hall, the new old Town Hall. And so that's going to really, you know, impact the staff and what they're doing. The other thing is that we currently have a regular scheduled meeting on evenings of Rosh Hashanah, which I would not attend, but which I would prefer, if one objects strongly, to reschedule in light of that, and I have respect for that.
Is it on the 10th?
It's on...
Yes, the 10th.
The 10th.
Because it's on Saturday the 9th, so I feel like, actually, I don't have it here.
Yeah, that's it Sunday.
Okay.
This is on September 10th?
10th and 11th.
We had meetings scheduled for the 9th, I mean, I'm sorry, for the 10th and the 24th.
So, Kelly, you had a suggestion, or we came up with a possibility of having, just, in light of all the responsibilities that we're doing, use that around the staff, of having a meeting, a regular one, on the 17th, rather than go all the way to the 24th, and a working session on the 20th, which I know is less quantity and against my general philosophy of, I would stack an agenda, but it just doesn't make sense, after some conversations, to have meetings at production responsibilities and all that, right in the middle of the move, or right before the move, or whatnot. So that, I got at least the proposal right, Kelly?
Yes, exactly. And the 17th is actually the date that the new Town Hall, or the old New Town Hall, will be open to the public that morning. So it just so happens that those two things could happen on the same day. So we'll open the building at 8:00 AM in the morning, and then that evening could have the first Board of Selectmen meeting in the Hall.
In the New Town Hall.
Yes.
So we're officially changing the meeting on the 10th to the 17th?
Yeah.
And not holding a meeting on the 24th?
Oh, and not having that one?
Right.
Because we already have the 24th as a working session.
Right.
Right. Yeah, so we continue that.
So we're going to go down one?
Yeah.
Cancel the 24th.
So we're going to do two meetings in the same week.
And that's it for September?
And that's it for September.
Correct.
Obviously, if there's real, some emergent reason why we have to have an emergency meeting or something else.
So the 17th and the 20th are it for September?
Yep.
Correct.
And I will, although it's against my basic nature, we try to be flexible on the amount of added items at either of those, particularly including the work session, where we kind of come, we need a little more, but we'll see how far we give it in the town of public calls. But we certainly, there's no reason we couldn't talk about goals and negotiations, as long as we continue clarity in terms of them being, at this point, separate.
So how comfortable do we feel that on the 17th, that the room will be ready to go for a meeting, and we've got recording and all that stuff? Is it worth it to, we can change it, though, couldn't we, in the last minute, to the library?
Yeah.
I would say to make sure that the library is available for us on that day.
As a backup.
And then we can move back and forth if things aren't quite ready.
We can repost to the library if something.
Right, for the 17th, that's the one.
You can, not that we wouldn't do it, too, but again, to the best of my knowledge, you can repost a minute before the meeting by putting a sign on the door, as long as it's clear to people where it's, you have to locate it.
We'll be moving in on the 12th, so certainly before, well before the 17th, we'll know if the room has any, if there's any issues that were to require that we go back to the library. If that were the case, we can revise the posting agenda and just change the location at that time.
So this, pardon my confusion, this coming Monday is the last meeting, working session or otherwise, for Board of Selectmen, our regular Monday meeting, correct?
In the month of August.
Of August.
As opposed to in perpetuity.
Perpetuity.
You said that, I was...
(laughing).
Getting a little nervous, eh, but that...
No, no, no.
But then we also have the 30th working session in August.
Oh, yeah, right.
Yes.
Thank you. That's just, I've just got...
Which is here.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And then hopefully, once we're in September, if everything goes as planned, we're always in the same place.
Always going to be at the New Town Hall.
Yeah.
If we had the executive session, that would be before the 20th, just for timing, to make sure.
Say that.
Say that again?
The executive session.
You are looking to see if we could...
No, that's going to be at a regular, it's going to be...
On Monday.
On Monday, the 20th?
Yes.
So if we have it, that's when it would be, at 6:30, half hour, four?
Oh, no, we weren't thinking of that.
Oh, that's right, we weren't.
No, I wouldn't do that on this. I don't think it's a long, it'd take a lot of time. There's just a couple of which we want to go over, make sure everyone's over.
Okay, so it would still start at 7?
Yep.
7, yeah.
Yep, 7:00 PM and 3:00 PM, we're still doing. All right, thank you all. Okay, so everyone should have a handout with pink or some little draft steel. And that is my attempt to just go one small step further in organizing our goals and objectives, and putting them in a little, hopefully, better language and whatnot. So, and if you'll indulge me, I would still like to facilitate, just in terms of steps. So the first question I'd like to throw out there is, are there any of these that could be combined? And the ones that jump out at me naturally are 2, 3, and 4, as a possibility, and 6 and 7, as a possibility, obviously just with a broader heading, more wording, or something like that.
I think... So observing that, and combining them, these are very broad, so to speak, and perhaps not as well defined, as we quipped, as I quipped with you, actually, we do it out of goal, we add them up on a list there, there were some 10 of them on the list, and there were five of us, and as I said, that means it's about 50 goals, because each of us has a slightly different, or maybe a very different, definition for what each of those items are. So while it may be good to combine them, so that we don't have too many, so to speak, to be tracking on, I think the amount of detail is important, so that we have a clear understanding of what it is that we're trying to accomplish under these various goals.
Right, so, again, I'm only going to push back in the sense of process, so I'm trying to get some...
Okay.
So we'll talk, I have no doubt that there are possibly four different opinions on terms of the level of detail that we need to get when we get to objectives, okay?
What I'm saying is the word "town operational systems" can mean five different things to people.
I know, but there's, but in a general sense, it can mean 50 different things, but in the general sense, 2, 3, and 4 are about finances, budgets, money.
True, I'm with you, I'm with you.
And I think, to me, and I understand that if we combine them, then we need to reward them.
Right, okay.
6 and 7 are...
And like you said, 6 and 7 are one.
I mean, 7 is kind of a subset of 6, in a way.
It is.
And 1 is the website, that's all part of town operations and systems, right?
I'm not sure I would do that only, again, I'm just sure, only because I think it's so paramount, and it's such, so important, the current status of the website, and improving, and so on and so forth, that my vote would be to keep that separated.
And separate.
But you don't, it doesn't talk about...
Let me go back to 2, 3, and 4. I'm not comfortable rolling those all together, because it, what I'm afraid is that the idea of policies and forecasting is going to kind of get rolled into the budget process, and I think we absolutely need to do a more in-depth, more far-reaching view. I would be inclined to put 2 and 3 together, financial policies and financial forecasting, both of which I think need a decade-long outlook, whereas the town budget is essentially a one- or two-year outlook with some capital thinking about the future. But frankly, number 3, I see it involving potentially other people, certainly other meetings, and so on and so forth, and I'm afraid we're going to end up, once again, sort of not looking as far down the road, or starting to try to look as far down the road as ultimately we need to.
That's 1.
And it's also because, fiscally, your town budget, I realize it's a priority and a goal, we've got to do it, but because that's kind of built into business as usual, to me, emphasizing, let's get our policies in line, it's a call-in center thing, and financial forecasting, which is a, basically, citizen's information and administrative planning process, those, to me, are things that we haven't done rigorously, at least in the recent past since I've been on, and that I think we ought to undertake as kind of a special project.
True.
I like that approach, Don, because also when we're talking about bringing the budget together, it was not just procedurally, and how to make it flow smoothly and get it done on time, but it was really taking a look, a deeper look, at how the organization is run, how it is structured, what we could do differently.
Well, that starts to get down to the operations systems, too.
Exactly.
And that's another reason that I think we need kind of a special look at that. I personally think the technology systems is something where we're probably going to want to get some kind of outside consultancy support, because I don't think there's anybody who understands all our systems, nor knows the landscape as to how they can and should fit together. Dick, you've talked about aspects of one of our current systems that are perhaps not being used, but are there, we pay for them as part of the system, but aren't being used. Should we, should we not, should we be doing this? Someone who knows municipal technology systems, I suspect that, you know, probably 10 grand or so, maybe more, but I think that that kind of expertise is going to be necessary. That, to me, is different than what I see as operational systems, which can and probably should be primarily an internal self-evaluation.
Something maybe consultants, but for example, if it's software that we have, and better understanding the software that we have, sometimes the vendor is very interested in telling us, or should be very interested in telling us about why their software is good in this area, or that, or you have this, and you ought to use it this way. So we may use a consultant, but we also may get some help from the vendor, whom we're already paying, so to speak.
Yeah, we will have to see on that. I've been in one situation in business where you had a very friendly, very helpful vendor that led the company down a path of, basically, software system that ended up support for it, and the larger SAP system that they were going to install was going away. They failed to tell us that, they failed to tell the company they had a client, and for two years, they were investing in something that ultimately they had to throw away. So I think an independent consultant at some point will be part of the process. It doesn't mean we can't and shouldn't talk to vendors, but I always think a grain of salt in talking to vendors, as nice as they are.
We may need support for a town website. I don't think you have the knowledge inside to redesign that website. It's one thing to check for completeness, and to get someone to be responsible for updating it on a regular basis, but if we find that you can't search it, that things are not linked to it, et cetera, I don't know, and Kelly, you probably could answer that, whether we have the expertise in-house to redesign and make changes to that website?
That would, in my mind, that comes out as a resource allocation issue, so, I mean, I personally think that should be number one on my list. The resource issue I have isn't even expertise or the design of the website, it's the time and the person who sits there and then is on the help desk, trying to resolve the issues with the vendor. So it's a timing constraint, it's a personnel constraint for me. To be honest, if I didn't have everything else going on, this is probably the most fun project on this entire list.
Do you think we have, apart from the resources, say that you did have, 50% of your staff were free, do you have the expertise to redesign that website?
We're not, we're not going to redesign, what we need to do is troubleshoot and try to improve the search capability and the useful, the ease of use of what we already have.
But that could involve a redesign in some ways.
It could, there could be changes in links and so on.
Right.
I don't think, when I think of design of a website, there's two pieces. One is kind of the graphical business, I think that is set, we're going to have what we have, it looks nice, better than before by far. The issue is some of the functionality that was in the old site, some of the functionality we're asking for now.
Yeah.
It can be done, it may take technical help to make that happen.
And we have the capability.
We haven't assessed what that is yet.
We haven't, but just having a body who understands enough, if we say we'd like to show the budgets on an ongoing basis during the budget cycle, and to link into that...
We have some citizens that will step forward, we've already checked.
We do have people who are willing to commit to that budget?
I've already secured commitments on a team of three, who will go through and do that.
Oh, great.
A team of three for...
To go through and review the website functionality issues.
Oh, okay.
They are among those who are concerned that things that used to be available are not available now, they're committed, they have experience with our website, and they're willing to support us.
Okay.
But the point is, these are citizens, volunteer, no money, but would do some of that time of looking to see where the links are broken, and so on and so forth.
Great.
So, and I... So just to fix the website, is that a good description of what they're going to do?
Yeah, they're going to first assess what's necessary, whether they actually build the links, or we go to the vendor and do it, or there's a third party, however we do that.
If the vendor can do it, we just need somebody to do it right now.
If a link is not there, and it should be, I'll give you an example of one thing that is, I find a big issue right now. One thing is, when you do a search, it, the problem is, it searches on, it does a string search, but people have not been putting in a robust set of identifiers.
Search terms, yeah.
And so, as a result, when you put in "open space plan," you get 2010s. You don't, 2017 is there, but nobody put the terms in the identifiers in order to be able to get it. So a search doesn't produce what you're looking for, and the reasonable assumption made is not there.
Yeah.
So that's one example. Another is the broken links that are missing, and so on. There are, so there's some other ones, but those are the kinds of things that could be identified. Then, there, I think, will be an education piece whereby every time a page goes up or something, or other, if there are new identifiers, that there'll be some kind of, I think we probably need to keep one page, sort of, have you thought about this, this, and this, so that when stuff does get posted, we make sure that if the average person does a search, even if you ask for something a little out of field, you stand a good chance of getting it, and if not on your first search, then on your second, but when it comes up "open space plan," and you only get 2010, we have a problem.
So they could identify all the redundancies, so that information only appears once, so it's not loaded in multiple spots, and who would update that?
That's another piece which makes sense, and, for instance, you might get that from the assessor's office, you might access that from the open space planning committee, you might, you should be able to access it in any place that is potentially relevant. What I think...
But they go to one document, so all of the sources are being...
No, they're all going to be the same, there should be links to that one document.
So they only update it once.
I mean, version control, there should never be multiple copies there. Some of them, and this is a case where I think some thought's going to have to go in, I think we need to fence off portions of it, the things that only Kelly, you, and Debbie should be able to work on. But there are other departmental things where you shouldn't have to have everything come through your office to get in there, so, for instance, if there are changes, updates in the assessor's office, that is something the assessor's office ought to have access to, that little piece.
They do, yeah, yeah.
Another example, I'm talking with Greg Crom, concerned about the mandatory water ban, and how few people are paying attention to it. I didn't realize, but it turns out that he publishes all the people who've been cited for water ban violations on their website. Who would ever know? I tried looking at water ban violations and got nothing. So the question is going to be, where do we put that stuff? How do we make it accessible? And I think concerned citizens are a perfect place to start, and the cost is fantastic. We roll.
So if you really want, if you really want to find the open space plan, it talks for your website. What you do is you go to Google, and you Google, pop still, okay. The point here is, the point here is, is that in today's day and age, we're not trying to put an indexing data against the document that we file. The search engines are good enough to go find those things. Perhaps what we need to do, and too much detail at this point, but perhaps what we need to do is think about what we have for the website engine, and ask our vendor, do they have a robust search engine, such that it will go against the website and be able to find things, as Google does across the web, et cetera, et cetera.
But the keywords is another thing we have to make more of us, that's where I think there are issues.
But there's no, but Google isn't finding things based on keywords.
Yes, it is.
Google is based on finding things throughout, anywhere in the document, based on how you do the search.
Oh, if you go through Google, I'm talking about the search function on the website. When I go there, I want to look at...
What I'm saying is, right, but we should have the kind of strength that Google is using within our website.
Right, to the extent that...
And not have to try to index it, oh, and they didn't index it with 2017, therefore, when I asked for 2017, it...
Right, we should, that should get fixed.
The search should be powerful enough.
Yeah, I agree.
In today's day and age.
Anyway, so I don't want to solve all the town's problems at this one meeting.
I'm sorry for sharing that.
No, I think it's helpful, so as usually some people know, we're going to talk about the same thing, but again, I bring it back to, the task at hand is for us to produce a document that hopefully has a consensus of the board, if not, then of a majority of the board.
Could I summarize what just happened, though? What we did is, we talked about one goal, and we identified the fact that there's a lot of issues in trying to understand and define what that goal is, I think.
Not to me, to me, we started way down the path to talk about how to solve the underlying problem, and that, okay, so, again, and I, I come from a bias of keeping this relatively simple. I don't disagree with what you're saying, I just think that's, that's doing the work, you know what I mean? We have to, that was a great conversation, I find it very helpful, but, but I don't think it's an annunciation of the, we were talking about what needs to be done, how to do it, I don't want to overcomplicate this.
At some point, we need to do it.
We have, with the Board of Selectmen, we have to help people do this, that's what we do, that's our job for the next year, I'm not, you know...
But we have to define, in much, in much...
Let me give you an example.
Clear away.
So for purpose, you and I are probably never going to agree on the level of detail that's needed on this document, that's okay, that's okay.
I think you just agree that it has to be done as a next step, it doesn't necessarily have to be done by us on this document.
Right, I find that what happens gets buried in...
It is a challenge. At this level, we could achieve a review and improvement, I don't know what the wording is here, accuracy of the website, which to somebody means that the dates on the agendas are accurate. Somebody else would say, accurate. Accurate means, when I go to find something, it's the most recent version, it's not accurate if I find the old version, and it doesn't tell me there's any...
Right, but that's going to be the...
The point is, is that we need to, to some degree, somebody else is going to say, oh, to improve the website, we need better pictures.
Well, I think that's, see, I don't disagree with what you're saying, something weird fits in. I think that's what's going to be done over the next year, or maybe it's going to take two years, and there's got to be some group of individuals that are tasked with bringing, with reaching the objectives.
We can ask them...
No need to listen, no need to twenty things.
I think we have to agree what this is, and I think to your point, it's not accuracy, it's recency. You want to make sure that the most recent is on here, as far as data.
I'm not saying what it is, I'm just saying that different people would have a different definition for the word accuracy, and what it means that we're trying to achieve.
Right, but we don't have to...
And when you get all done, we have achieved accuracy.
So the first...
Wait a minute, I still get the wrong thing.
Dick.
Oh, but we get this to drive it.
Dick, the first thing I would do is I would ask whatever team, group, individual, whatever gets assigned to that, to please outline the task as they see it, based upon our incomplete thing, then come back to us, so that we have a little back and forth about, do we agree on it? And they can come up with a more detailed thing, and then we can agree and decide on that. I don't think that'll be a problem.
It's not, I mean, I don't...
This is really not a placeholder.
Us doing this, and then going on vacation for the next 10 months. No, I'm not, I'm not being sarcastic to you, I mean, I don't, you know, but if there's a word that's missing when we finalize this, then let's add one.
Yeah, and it's not so much a word, I think if we agree on what the concept is, then Kelly would take it to the next level, like, there are things out of here that Kelly would further elaborate on. For instance, you may want the team to identify the source of data, or who updates, or how often, or what links need to be done. There may be things that you want to give them some direction, and then the team takes it, and they work on it. But I think there's a level of detail between this and just handing it off to a team, there has to be some discussion and elaboration beyond that one sentence.
I tend to agree.
Or they might head down the wrong path, wasting time.
Yeah, it's not, I don't see this as an opera...
It's not a big deal.
I guess I don't see this as an operational document, and that's...
No, but there will be something after this that is more operational functionality.
That's what we do, yeah, absolutely.
So I looked at this, and I said, oh, well, I've already done that, okay, check that off the list. I've already reviewed it for accuracy, completeness, and ease of use. Are there issues? Absolutely. How do I fix them? Give me a team of people, I can fix it tomorrow. The issue for me is, I don't know who your three volunteers are, I have some people in mind, too. If I know that this is a priority that needs to take place before I deal with financial forecasting and policies, I need your direction to say, this is an important thing, to me, it's a resource issue, I can find some ways, Mark came in the other day, he gave me some great ideas, you know, maybe we can reach out to Endocod, get an intern to help us. Those are all great things, but I need to be able to prioritize this list with available resources.
Yeah, but we're never going to get to the issue of prioritizing...
We'll get there until I know that it's an issue.
Until we get to number one.
Exactly. So we'll make a...
It's just a guide, it's just a...
Yeah, and I guess there's one...
It's a priority, I think, with this.
I'm not looking, if I'm putting my top five goals for you, Kelly, personally...
Yeah.
I would not put town website here.
Please, I don't think we're ever going to get anywhere. I apologize on an interpersonal level, if I'm true, okay? We're not at priorities yet, I get that.
I know, I just sort of, I want to give you...
So let's do this, I'm not trying to be the teacher in a classroom, but let's do this. Number one, town website. You got a, there certainly needs to be a B. I'm going to suggest for working, at least for working, that's a, B is improvement of website functionality, I thought that was a great word.
Yes.
Okay.
All right?
Yes.
Okay, let's pause, again, just for the limited purposes that we're talking about, and I don't mean with a first and a second and all that, but would anybody like to amend for the working number one, it's not necessarily going to be number one priority, just numbered one, town website, A, review of current website for accuracy, completeness, and ease of use, B, improvement of website functionality, would anybody like to amend that, add to it, Walter?
I would say to come out of this, to know who is going to do the updating, and that they have responsibility for that in their job objectives, because...
But that, I don't, that's implementation.
Okay.
I don't want to get into implementation, I want to just list, this is like a policy document, that's all it is. I want to just list, this is like a board policy document, that's all it is.
Okay, so I would suggest the wording be as instead improved usefulness for citizens, for town citizens, residents.
How's that different for functionality?
And that's got easier.
Well, because functionality may be trying to help the town employees.
Well, I assume that for, I'll just say for, for administration and citizens, I'm fine with that.
But I'm not sure that we're trying to drive this, the website to be more useful for the administration.
Oh, I absolutely do. I absolutely do. I think it should be.
It should be, it should be, but what, what is our real goal is to make it useful for a lot of people, which are the residents that have been trying to. But there's different things that we would look for.
I'm on the board of selectmen and I go there looking for town ballots and I can't find them.
Administration and citizens.
Yeah, Tula could use.
Does administration mean, maybe that's a, needs to be, it's not the staff admin.
Well, I, I think of Tula, she has all these assessment tools that are on there that if citizens had an easier time getting to use would make her life easier. So she has an investment in supporting the updating and pieces of that. So for instance, when a house sale comes in, bang, she can put that stuff up and get everything so it's as up to date as possible now.
Okay, what if it's of citizens and, what do you mean by administration?
People like Tula, like Kelly.
Town employees, because what I'm doing is.
I don't have a problem with town employees, all I want, it's, another example is Diane putting complaints, you know, sign complaints up and so on, all that stuff.
Is that all under website functionality?
That to me is functionality, that means.
All right, so here's what we got. I'm going to pause us here, we, no one's voting on anything that's going before, right now, moving on. A is review, the draft at this point, A is review of current website for accuracy, completeness and ease of use, and B is improvement of website functionality for citizens and employees, you know, and town employees.
If I can just throw it one more time, just to identify responsibilities for maintenance on a go-forward basis, because what's going to happen, it'll be updated, it'll look great, and then nobody's going to be responsible for doing any updating.
That's with an improvement. I'm not going to get, I could not.
That will not get forgotten, Lynn, because I'm highly committed to that. There's the content piece which needs to be distributed and then the technical piece that needs to be focused and centralized.
It's, there's a huge amount of work to be done on how to implement the goals and objectives.
That will not be forgotten.
I think of it every time I'm on the board.
That's a draft on number one. So we have an initial okay with two and three, so I would suggest that we make the title Town Financial Policies and Forecasting.
Why do you want to combine them when they?
Just trying to get a manageable document.
I hate to lose the different flavors by combining them in the name of manageability. I, I'm concerned that financial forecasting is something different in my mind than financial policies.
Would they be done by different groups?
Sure, they would, whatever.
No, I mean, if they're done by the same group, it makes more sense. If they were part in parcel, as, as part of the same effort, then it would be artificially separating them. But if they're done by two separate groups, then yes, they're.
If you're doing financial policy, you're not in the process of financial forecasting. If you're in the process of financial forecasting, you're not working policy. One may feed into the other back and forth a little bit, but I see them as distinctly different processes with distinct outcomes.
So I think we could redo something.
Yeah.
Okay, there's something. Again, I'm only working on a documentary level, I'm not a, anyway. So now we're back to town financial policies, review, compilation, well, you can read it. Anybody like to, again, this is enough for a final, but so trying to get us toward a draft here. Anybody have any amendments or additions or whatever to, to A or B?
Can I make a suggestion after John, John, do you want to?
Yeah, I was just going to say, under two B, the word additional bothers me. I would be inclined to make a comprehensive policies as appropriate rather than additional, because there may be some existing ones that we need to alter.
Okay, additional is gone, anything else?
And I put, yeah.
Can I make a suggestion that I think might simplify it, but aligns it based on what we've already done? I was thinking that the correct term, terminology might be to compile financial policies for review and discussion. Frankly, we've already done that and we have those ready. But basically, we're taking everything that already exists or that's a best practice, it's already been done in our Collins report. And then the second one would be to review and vote to adopt comprehensive written financial policies. We have a document in draft format, it needs to go to the board of selectmen for discussion, it needs to go to the FinCom for discussion. All of the groundwork has been done with the research we've done and the work that we did with the Collins Center. We're really in a point now where I need to be able to hand it off and to be able to explain to each one of these groups what these policies mean, what it means to us based on our actuals, and to make sure that everyone either understands or that if there are suggestions to change them, that we would be able to do that through that process. And at the end of that process, we will have adopted the policies that we have already written and compiled and researched.
So you've done everything you need to, you're ready to sit down with FinCom and the board of selectmen to review that?
Within the next two weeks, yes.
Okay, so A is kind of done, except.
It's already done.
FinCom hasn't done it, keep in mind, this is not your role.
No, FinCom was involved, so they've had some involvement, but not formally.
But what I'm saying is, it's not you compiling and organizing them. In a sense, it's the FinCom and board of selectmen should basically review existing policies. We don't need to compile or organize them, you've done that. And then the second piece is basically to essentially consider new or additional comprehensive policies as appropriate, which would be a function of Collins Center recommendations and possibly somebody saying, hey, these things right here, if we could combine them.
Well, I've already done that, is what I'm saying.
They've already done that?
We've got a document from the, from the Collins Center and I've gone through them and I've reviewed them. And then I had individuals representative from the FinCom, a representative from the board of selectmen, and members of my team who have all independently gone through them and said, we should change this, we should do this. And I have a final draft document that's ready for discussion.
Including new policies and everything?
Everything that's in there that's already been identified as a best practice or that we've already been doing, and we just need to put it in writing, it's all done.
So is there any reason we shouldn't just finish that up by the middle of September?
No.
Then we could move that up and take it off the.
I'd try to.
Well, I think it needs to stay on here. The reason why is because we need to say, we, meaning the board, needs to stay focused on the point that we need to discuss it and it needs to be prioritized so it doesn't fill the bottom of the pile.
That's okay, but I want to be, what I would be inclined to say is if we're that far along, which I was not aware that we are and I'm delighted, then sidebar to whatever the language is here, let's do this so we can kind of get that taken care of, because that will help us a lot in terms of financial forecasting, it should help us in terms of town budget, and it'd be great to get.
It's the roadmap to get us.
It would be good to get a piece of this taken care of as well as, you know, helping us with Collins Center and setting the stage for continuing to improve our credit rating.
Correct.
Okay, can you give me that one?
So let me, let me just, what I think we just said is that we can get rid of compiled financial policies because that's already done.
Yep.
We can change, so instead of having an A to B, we would just have one. It would say, review and.
Proposed policy.
Yeah, review proposed comprehensive written financial policies. But somewhere it needs to say vote to adopt, because that's the final.
And approve.
I'm not that good at the secretary stuff. Review proposed comprehensive, written.
Comprehensive financial policies.
Exactly.
Financial.
And vote to adopt, and.
And approve.
And approve, and adopt, whatever that word is.
The adopt is, yeah, but, so we make them official. I think that's a great thing for the fallout, we can fit it in.
We have to, I'm just, if we want to re.
No, I, I totally favor this.
In October, in October, we have to go for another bond issue. We need to show progress on this, so that should be the top thing on this.
I leave it to the chair, what I totally support, driving that.
Review proposed, okay, you're taking notes, I'm taking notes, we should be focused.
I'm all taking notes, I don't know the exact language that we're coming up with. Number three, financial forecasting, additions, deletion, revision.
So it's, it's good that it includes quote, the words capital planning. How do we essentially say that what we're really referring to, I believe, is the budget items going out multiple years, so to speak, not, not the budget, but the effect on the budget.
Well, there's two pieces. One are the ongoing things that continue to ramp up like healthcare and those sorts of things. Those are operating. I'm particularly concerned because the lumps and bumps that people are most upset about tend to be the big expenses that suddenly show up and within two years, we're trying to run ahead with a process to do it. We have a police station that has asbestos and needs some work. We have a fire station that has asbestos and needs some work. We ought to have those in a plan, which we're going to do first? I've heard no conversation about a prioritization. And I think for me, a financial plan would say, this is where we ought to start, this is what we ought to do, here's what we anticipate, and looking out as best we can, 20 years, is there something that's coming along that's going to need a big influx of money in 20 years? We're spending a lot on elementary schools now. Maybe we don't have to do anything, but in 15 years, there'll be interior work that's necessary. Let's forecast that, whether or not we get school building authority, SBA support or not, we ought to kind of just put it out there so that when the conversation comes around to that again, we're not sort of bringing it up for the first time. I think it will inform our conversations about the near-term camp, capital spending greatly if we know where we think we're going out there, we'll change the thing. So for instance, I don't know of any big new things that we have to do in town beyond those two that I mentioned, but we ought to put our heads together and think about it. And part of that could be, gee, we've got a big lump coming at this time right out here. Gosh, do we want to consider selling the old highway department? Do we want to consider something we're going to have to build there? We've solved a lot of problems, but I think we need to develop the discipline to be looking closely at the next five to 10 years, but with a vision out to 20.
Would it help to put the word long-term in front of capital and change planning to plan?
Well, I think capital planning catches everything that you said.
As long as it's a word agreement.
Five years or 20 years, but it's all part of capital planning.
I think it's worth pointing out five to 20 years.
The other piece of it is the budget things, whether it's healthcare, as you pointed out. Those things I think also need to be, that's a major part of the forecast also.
That's the operational piece, yeah.
And, and those things will be done typically with parameters so that you can adjust them and say, let's assume that healthcare will go up at 5%. Well, no, we're going to change the temperature. I mean, that's part of this kind of forecasting, and you know what the assumptions are that you go in with. And then you say, well, you know, what happens if in fact they go down to 2%? Well, then we'd have this. So I think that, that piece, the ones you described of the capital, which are very important, no question, those are big ones, but then this, the ongoing budget ones, and that's what I was trying to find a, is budget a good way to describe that?
I'd say operating, so if that includes things like steps.
You could put that in front of category, including operating.
Can I make a suggestion for you to discuss? I, I know that these were combined and I, and I see why, actually, one of my comments previously said, to me, they all fall under sort of the umbrella of fiscal health. And if, let's say, the board's goal is to promote fiscal sustainability and strong financial condition, this would be maybe one of those tasks related to that. What I was suggesting is that we would separate the capital because it is such a finite process that we've already begun and we really just need to pick up what we created with the Collins Center, what we created the year before the Collins Center came with the five-year plan. What I was suggesting perhaps is wording that the, the goal or objective or task would be to approve a five-year capital plan for FY 20 through 25, which even though it's five years, it's not 20, but to jump from the five-year model that we've begun to 20 is really introducing a new level of complexity to something we haven't quite figured out for five years. So while I see a 20-year plan down the road right now, I think we can get back to the five-year model and have a really robust model for the next five years, that that would be helpful. What I was thinking would be a very simple way to put it is to approve a five-year capital improvement plan for FY 20 through 25, and then I would come back to you and say, how are we going to do that? I'm going to create the forms, we're going to distribute those to the department heads, and I could outline the process I'm going to use to present to you a five-year capital plan for 20 through 25, because we already have a number of components that have already been begun, that we already started. And now what I need is sort of your permission to prioritize that and to, and to jump right into that so that I can prepare that and give that to you for your discussion. So that, so what I said, what I was proposing on my notes was to approve a five-year capital improvement plan for FY 20 through 25. And then related to that, and if it had to be called out, to outline a debt service repayment schedule for existing debt, meaning that there was a lot of, I've been dealing, talking with the treasurer and our financial advisor about preparing for the next bond issue, what was budgeted, what was on the table and what variations might come once we sit down again with Lori. So what I had talked with Barbara about was coming up with a list that says, okay, this is what we bonded, this is what we borrowed, this is what's coming up this year, here's what's coming up next year, and just putting that into one page so that we can use that with our capital planning to look at where the impacts are going to hit and what mechanisms, if any, we have to, to minimize or mitigate the impact on taxpayers. So the way I worded that was just to say underneath the five-year capital improvement plan was to say that we would outline the debt service repayment schedule for existing debt. I don't really have, I mean, to me, that would be a part of the capital planning process, but if we had to outline it and make that a priority, that's how I would word that.
Would you add in the new debt as well, you just think it's existing?
Well, that's, it's, I'm thinking of it all. New debt is whatever's been appropriated by town meetings.
I think all of that needs to happen, but there are things like, you know, I was a little surprised when the whole business of rebuilding the, the house that's up in the cemetery and so on, things like that. We need a comprehensive view of all the buildings, a best shot at, is the highway department roof going to have to be replaced sometime, that's probably half a million dollars? Are we going to, you know, things like that.
Yeah.
Not that we need another ladder truck, but for instance, a ladder truck size, anything that is, in my view, half a million or more, possibly, I think we should be throwing a dart and saying, it's out there, we don't know when. And maybe we just put it into that unknown sort of 10 to 20-year category. But as we start to move forward, we start to think, is it going to be the end of that? Is it going to be the beginning of that? Because one of the problems, we clumped some big stuff together and some of it was by chance, but some of it was sort of the lack of really kind of trying to spread them out. And I think we need to be more predictable as well.
Well, that, that's, five years ago, five years ago when we came, I, I had that same issue. And I said, okay, we're, we haven't done anything for 20 years, how do we prioritize what's being thrown in front of us?
That's the process I want to see here, looking out firmly.
And this is, and all I'm saying is that I've done a huge amount of work to get to that end. And if this board tells me that that's a priority, I will start ignoring all of the public records requests that we're dealing with and just start focusing on this. I just need your support to do that.
If you've already done it, I think it's something that we as a board should review.
Okay.
And then my next step would be to say, whether it's part of the town website improvement project or it just plain gets thrown up there, I think we need to find a way to put that into the realm of public communication and public information.
Yeah.
So that as we go into our tax conversations, as we do the budget, that stuff's out there, people kind of see it. And there isn't this case of, this is going to happen now or that's not. I'll give you an example, a really big one, and this is relevant. What's Masco going to do? We have a $30 million nut, what are we going to do? We have a, I won't say a plan, we have an assessment that points to what we ought to do within 10 years because parts are going to be failing. As you know, the bond issue that was not passed includes fixing holes in the roof and to preserve the building so we don't have it rust away while we wait to get a new roof put on, we're spending money on that. And there's also the issue that the ADAC units, which have a lot to do with, again, preserving the interior of the building, they're failing left, right and center. And the problem is that when you have a $120,000 unit to a $200,000 unit on the roof, there are 17 of them, do you yearly replace $20,000 parts? Do you, do you replace $20,000 parts knowing that the rest of it is probably going to fail in a year or two? Or do you replace the whole thing? We're wrestling with that at Masco right now. There is a planned meeting, we just had our summer retreat for the school committee last night, and we are going to bring the liaisons for the three towns, the, I think it's going to maybe be Che from the finance committee on our end, but bring the town liaisons together with the budget committee and say, here's our problem, how can we do this? And see whether we can build some kind of consensus on, do you like that we present capital warrant articles separately? Do you want us to include that in the operating budget, which might fluctuate? Would you like to see us put $250,000 or whatever amount annually into a stabilization fund? And you'll agree to support that as opposed to having separate? We don't know, that's a conversation. But I know Masco's trying to get very proactive on how we're going to go ahead and finance this as our bonds start to roll off. 2022, we're out of bond territory at Masco, are we going to take on new ones? That's the kind of thing that that planning, the result of those conversations, which we, we have as a school committee priority to do this year, are going to affect long-term financial planning, not just for Tomsfield, for the other towns too. But that's the kind of stuff that's critical to put into the town website for the towns' thinking so that if there is going to be a big nut and Masco's going to go out and do this, there's some kind of discussion, Kelly, with the bonds that do roll off. There's going to be another one that the towns are going to be asked to approve for Masco. So it's no surprise, we know how big it is and when it's coming, and that we don't have something else big happening at the same time.
What is the timeframe that Masco is looking, you're getting together, are you looking at a 10-year plan?
September.
No, I mean, how far out are those projections about?
They go out, they currently go out 10 years.
10 years.
And the goal on those 10 years, why is it 10 years? Because we asked. Because we asked Habib and Associates to tell us what was necessary to make the building last another 30 to 40 years without major addition. In other words, what do we have to do to be pretty sure it's just normal maintenance for the next 20 to 30, I mean, 30 to 40 years?
With the work that you've done, Kelly, has Masco given input into the five-year plan that you have?
No, because it's really a separate, I've been treating that, I've been compartmentalizing that separately. I think it needs to be identified in our capital plan, but it is, it is completely independent of our authority.
It's not our planning, but.
Right.
Masco, we're trying to engage the FinCom liaisons in that conversation. First of all, we would like consensus among them, and I know that's going to be kind of a challenge because they all work differently and so on. But we need some consensus from them, because if we're going to come with bond issues that affect the existence of the school, if currently, we have to with a master agreement, we're going to get three towns to approve. One of the other questions is, we probably should rewrite our tri-town agreement, district agreement, which has some significant limitations and so on. And there's a committee in our group that's going to start looking at that. But because so much of the impact is going to be financial, we want to engage the financial liaisons in that conversation, too. We're trying to reduce the surprises. But what it's going to do is provide useful information that already has some understanding at least, and we hope support in the towns, by the time it gets ready to be put in some form into the town's capital budget.
Right.
There'll be significant pieces.
Well, because there are the three towns, and even though we don't have direct control over what happens, I think your point is a very valid one, that it should be incorporated into our planning.
Yep.
Because we know it is coming down. The exact amount, that might vary, but it will have an impact on our overall finances. So both the operational, the capital, the Masco, the debt.
I hear what everyone's saying, my, and we're only on number three. My, my, my thought, though, is that we're, as it is, we haven't even perfected our own capital planning right now, and to incorporate a Masco plan on top of that is just going to be an enormous amount of work, requiring a lot of resources that we don't have. And I would be sitting here and I wouldn't be responsible to say that it's going to be possible that we should put that on a list, you know what I mean?
Let the FinCom come up with something. I think we should put a placeholder in there. I think to not recognize that there is going to be a $10 million bond at some point, in some form, whether it's little 1 millions.
I think it's important for us to know ahead of time because they, you know, the FinCom says.